It's six o'clock. In that case, I'm going to call this meeting of the Enfield Select Board of February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three to order. First item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing regarding the acceptance of one-time bridge aid in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So to discuss and accept a special one-time payment of bridge aid funds in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. The town manager can open the discussion.
So this is very similar to the the road payment we accepted earlier. This is came out of the state legislature. They give us this money to help Porton versus Bridge payments or any type of project. It has to be something that's not already in built into this year's budget, so it's a negative project. So we're just asking that the the select board would approve accepting that money. And well, I'm sure next year we'll work with the CIP committee to start looking at where we'll allocate that fund.
Are there any comments on this item? Motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, we should.
No?
Public, right? Or?
Comments from the public?
The CIP briefly looked at this already and acknowledged it was a gift from the state, if you will, a grant from the state. And the only recommendation at the time for this year's review, and it'll actually be financially reviewed more next year, was that the couple of bridges that it might possibly be go to be looked at by an engineer to establish prioritization.
Sense? Other comments? Motion to close the hearing. So moved. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to accept the funds.
Motion to accept the funds.
We will be accepting a one-time social payment of bridge aid funds in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Any comments on the minutes?
I make a motion to go to the suspended. I don't have any.
I have two seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, are there any board reports?
We did have a parent discommission meeting, but the discussion's on the agenda for later, so we'll talk about that.
Obviously, we're gonna have a nice discussion about budget committee work. And the other board reports. Town managers report.
I had a fairly short report tonight, but most of my work lately has been on the budget, working on that and working on staff.
Could you speak up? I can barely hear.
Oh, the.
So for the staff report that I normally give, as you know, the Enfield Police Department lost two officers in the last two months. We do currently have seven uncertified applicants that'll be taking a physical fitness test this next weekend. And there has been two certified officers that we've learned about that express some level of interest in looking at the town of Enfield, so the police chief will continue looking into those and seeing if there truly is an interest. So yeah, the police chief and lieutenant pride will be working through screening and hiring process of some new candidates. EPW has made an offer which has been accepted to the light equipment operator position that was open. This operator's coming to us with a with a CDL. They've worked for the state doing snowplow work before, so it's nice to nice to bring someone on board that has the training that's needed. This brings our public works department back up to full staff at this time.
That's excellent.
And then, in addition, we're we're very excited, Lisa's very excited, that we brought on our new accounting and payroll clerk this week, and she's at the town office, and it brings our town office staff back up to full staffing as well. So we'll be going through some training, and once we get her on, maybe in a next meeting or so, I'll ask her to come in and meet the board.
Thank you.
Public safety Whitney Hall projects, there's been some movement on that. Police chief Holland, fire chief Neely, and I, we continue to work with our architects and contractors to kind of scale back our initial design. I think, as everybody knows, you start the final design, you build the building, and it usually comes back more than you expected, and we put some wish list items in there. So we've been working to to scale back a little bit, and we'll be meeting with the impact committee, I think, next week to just bring them up to speed on where we're at, what we've been working on. But we're we're hopeful, we have a plan that's within the budget. It looks like we came to some conclusions last week to to bring one forward that that gets us back in the ballpark where we need to be. Chief Holland continues to work with Homeland Security and USDA, trying to secure grant funds for the emergency operations center and for interior some of these buildings. I've also been in contact with USDA and the New Hampshire Finance Authority to explore grant opportunities for the Whitney Hall project. We're continuing to look at those and see what's out there and available. The invasive species project that we've worked on, I have received a draft invasive species report. I had a meeting with our consultants. I I reviewed it from cover to cover and talked with them almost page by page as we went through that. I have asked them to make a few changes to the report, but it's it's mostly, hey, can you add what you put over here in this section too, so people don't have to flip back and forth doing things? So it's it's more formatting and how they do it, not what they put in the report, but it's a very thorough report, very well done. We also spent quite a bit of time on that meeting, talking about the upcoming public outreach and how we were gonna do some things. We're actually planning right now to do a a public meeting probably in the May timeframe. We're gonna introduce it to the select board in April, but in the May timeframe, I think we're gonna do a a public meeting at the community building. And there just happens along the river out there behind the community building, there are some invasive species that I've identified, so we're looking at possibly doing like a morning class and an afternoon hands-on to show people how to remove those plants. And so we think it'll be a great first run at at education, and we'll continue putting some things forward there, but it's very nice to see that project moving forward. And then I just wanted to give you a brief update. It's been a little quiet as of late, but I did meet this week with the Grafton County Broadband Committee project. We continue to slowly move that project forward. We're awaiting the announcement for the NTIA grant that we put in for for the twenty-six million dollar build out of the middle mile. We're hopeful that announcement's coming soon, and I guess we're still hopeful that we'll get it, but we're looking at that. We're also working with our consultants, EX Squared, to complete last mile plans for each and every community in Grafton County. Those plans got delayed slightly, but we're we're still looking for like late this spring, early summer, that every town in Grafton County will have last mile plans, including poll permits ready to go for them to go out and get grants and expand internet or work with the internet service provider on that. And then one local note on that, I continue to work with Hub fifty-six and Comcast and anybody else I can find to to expand local internet, so.
Any luck?
A little bit. I've worked with Hub sixty-six to put in a couple grants. Comcast has called me to write letters of support. I continue to do that, but no money that I know of has come through yet. But we continue to work on it, continue to work together to see if we can make something happen. And that's all I have.
Okay. Next up, we have communications from the New Hampshire Liquor Commission regarding the Upper Valley Snow Sports Foundation at Whaleback Mountain and application for caterer onsite license, liquor license, I take it.
Yes, I can talk about this just a little bit. I was gonna send you guys an email, and we decided just to put it in the in the packet. I've been Whaleback reached out to me. We also received the letter that's in your packet from the from the Liquor Commission, and they asked me to write a a letter of support on behalf of the town to support this. Chief Holland and I did talk with Whaleback, and what they're really looking at doing is being able to expand to serve alcohol on their back deck that comes right off their building, and then for special events to be able to put a tent outdoors there. And so in talking with them, Chief Holland and I had no issue with that and wanted to to get the buy-in of the select board before I wrote a letter.
Makes perfect sense to me. I think that that's sort of thing that businesses are doing. How do you feel?
I agree.
I guess we're all in agreement.
And they're already serving alcohol without an S G R, and kind of so.
You don't need a motion for that, do you?
No.
Okay, so the business for the evening. First up to approve and sign loan documents to Whitney Hall.
So we have Arlene. I don't know if the other person, Renell, is not, but Arlene's here to answer any questions that you might have. I put some information in your in your packet on the loan. As we discussed at the last meeting, and we've been talking about all along, the the loan amount will be for five million, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. We do believe this is on the higher side. This doesn't include library fundraising, those types of things that'll that'll allow us to to be lower than that, but we wanted to make sure to have authority to to borrow up to the full amount. Working with Arlene, we were able to get a a four percent interest rate fixed for twenty years on a thirty-year amortized loan, so it'll there'll be the one-time change at the twenty-year mark. That'll be the treasury rate plus forty basis points, just like the public safety building we did. As I told you, at that time, our goal will be to make notes in our system that, you know, we'll be watching when we get a few years down the road, if the interest rates come down and we can refinance this, then we'll we'll look at doing that before that that twenty-year change. But other than that, we'd like to to get approval, final approval for this loan, and then we do have loan documents for you guys to sign before the end of the ninth.
Choose.
I thought the giving up the motion that was included.
Is there a motion?
Okay. Yes, we do have a resolution to read.
Yeah, that was built into the document.
Yeah.
Any discussion before we read this?
I think the one beside us, just based on the current ten-year average, forty basis points is a very fair margin for them to make a profit, and it would not, yeah, it would be right in line. Right now, it would bring us just under four percent, so I'm very comfortable with it, and if we get lucky enough, but it drops down and we can refinance them.
So I should read all of this, including where it says voted, 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 voted? Yes.
That's why you're the English teacher.
Always good to be reminded of these things. Okay, town of Enfield, New Hampshire, resolution of the governing board. The undersigned, at least a majority of the governing board of the issuer and the treasurer of the issuer hereby certify that a meeting of the governing board of the issuer was held with respect to the issuance of the notes defined below, and that notice of said meeting was afforded to said officers and the public in accordance with the provisions of RSA ninety-one dash A, as amended, and the applicable rules and bylaws of the issuer, if any, and that at least a majority of the governing board were present throughout said meeting, that the following votes were adopted at said meeting, all as being in the best interests of the issuer, and that the resolutions set forth below have not been repealed, amended, or rescinded as of the date thereof. Voted to authorize the issuance of five million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eighty-six dollars general obligation notes of the issuer, which were heretofore authorized by the issuer on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, such notes to be dated February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. We vote on these one by one, or we don't have to vote?
I think you could probably do this like.
Voted to sell said notes to the purchaser with the principal amounts, maturities, premiums, if any, redemption provisions, if any, and interest rates specified on Schedule A attached here too, and made apart hereof. Voted to issue the notes and substantially the form set forth in Schedule B attached here too, and made apart hereof. Voted that the note shall be general obligations of the issuer. Voted to authorize at least a majority of the governing board and the treasurer to sign the notes or have said signature printed electronically, or in fact, similarly on the notes, and to affix the issuer's seal thereto. Voted to authorize the treasurer to deliver the notes to the purchaser against payment therefore. Voted to authorize at least a majority of the governing board and the treasurer to execute and deliver a signature and no litigation certificate with a receipt, a no arbitration and tax certificate, a line of credit writer, and IRS Form eight zero three eight dash G, and substantially the forms presented to this meeting, and such other documents as may be necessary or appropriate to accomplish the sale and delivery of the notes in accordance with the foregoing, and voted that the issuer shall serve as its own paying agent with respect to the notes. You all got that?
Yeah, so moved.
All over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In plain English, we're gonna follow all the rules we have to follow.
And I believe our signatures will be called.
Do you guys have any questions for Arlene, or Arlene, did you wanna say anything?
Nope.
You just muted yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You will notice that Renell very nicely did a lot of the documents. They're in legalese. There are a few documents that the bank did do also, but basically, you're gonna have two years to disperse the funds, and you're gonna start making payments, you know, at the anniversary date, one year from now. So because you're not taking the full amount upfront, what'll happen is that the first two payments are going to go primarily to principal, so you're gonna end up reducing the term of the loan, or at some point, we can, like you were talking about, refinance and change the payment to lower it if you want to. But this gives you some wiggle room. Does anybody have any questions? And if you want to have, like, if you're gonna have either the treasurer and or the town manager do the dispersments for you, we just need to know that upfront.
We have that form over here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we do. It'll more likely be the treasurer, but we'll put both of us on there.
There was, it was an exhibit, and there was like, so we need a motion on that, or?
Didn't you read that as part of the?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we're just signing off, right? As long as it's, yeah. So. All right.
Are we ready to move on?
Think so.
Next up, we have the Budget Committee presentation.
Need a column meeting to order first.
All right. So Enfield Budget Committee presenting, calling meeting to order.
Six eighteen.
Six eighteen. I think we have everybody.
Or.
You have a quote. All right. So. You're representing the Enfield budget proposal for two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide, please. Consistent with prior years. Consistent with prior years, so the town manager worked on a budget of department heads that was then reviewed by the committee in detail with the goal of maintaining core services and maintaining current quality of life. Next slide. Key considerations for this year, I'll go through them one by one, but for level of service, we are not adding any additional positions. So we're maintaining the department staffing levels at existing at these, and then non-labor expenses were adjusted based on prior year expenses. So there's no significant changes there to the amount of services offered. Slide. Another consideration for the budget was inflation rates, as everybody, I'm sure, is fully aware, the last year or two years have been very interesting. So inflation is shown there for Boston. You can get the data at that link. The two thousand and twenty-two inflation rates were at seven percent for this particular metric. Any questions? Next slide. On labor, so we can took two factors into consideration. A was the Boston cost of living metrics, which was at seven percent, as well as our desires to be competitive in the local markets. As discussed during last year's budget meeting, we noticed that we were a little behind, and we're trying to play a little catch-up. We tried to continue to do that this year. After talking to nearby towns, mainly by the town manager, and I believe in support of the police chief, we found out that the adjustments in nearby towns were between four and a half and eight point seven percent. The average was actually in the range of seven point two. With that information, we talked about whether we wanted to pursue seven or eight percent. Given the fact that the average was seven point two, and we wanted to close the gap, we discussed making it eight percent, and that's for cola plus merit. The impact of an eight percent would be about twenty-six dollars, eighty-three cents per hundred thousand dollars in value. One of the reasons we supported that too was because we talked about having a salary study done, so that we can actually put some factual data behind pay for all town employees so that it can be fair and competitive going forward. And I believe that salary study is part of next year's budget. Any questions on this slide? Okay, next slide. So last year, the town voted to embark on two building projects, the public safety building. Current, so the the full amount, I believe, for payments is four hundred and seventy going forward. In the budget for two thousand and twenty-three, I believe it's only a partial amount, and the town manager can explain why.
And so what we did, we had budgeted the four seventy, six twenty-nine, but as Arlene just spoke about, we have not taken a draw yet, so we're not gonna have to pay any interest. So the two seventy, six twenty-nine is a full principal payment, and we left about twenty-eight thousand dollars in there, so if we do take a draw, there's some money to pay the interest part if we need it. But we did that, and it just really in an effort to keep the budget down as low as we could, and in a way, it almost phases that payment in just a little bit more. So we we decided to do that at our last meeting.
So next year, it would be two seventy, six twenty-nine, and then by two thousand and twenty-four, it would be the full amount. For Whitney Hall, there's no no cost included in the budget, mainly because that sounds like we haven't taken a loan out yet. But as was discussed, that will start phasing in next year and the year after. Any question on the impact of building projects in next year's budget? No? Okay. So after reviewing all departments, we came up with a budget for two thousand and twenty-three for the general government operating budget of six point six million. That's about seven hundred thousand higher compared to two thousand and twenty-two, two hundred and seventy thousand as a result of the public safety building, and then four hundred and forty-seven thousand as a result of largely labor and inflation market pressure. So there are some other changes, that's why it says largely. So there's been changes to non-labor as a result of inflation and other items. This shows a slide that's been presented in prior years, it shows the budget over the general government budget over time, as well as the changes. So you're seeing we're increasing by about fifteen percent compared to last year, and about a third of that increases as a result of the building project.
We have to replace that slide with the new.
I said still the old number. I'll do that. Next slide. So I wanted to show tax rate history. It's always shown in lovely tables in our town report, but I figured graphs are kind of nice. So you can see that the bottom is the town part of the tax rate, it stayed pretty flat, it increased a little bit in two thousand and sixteen. It's gonna go up now in two thousand and twenty-three, again, for the reasons discussed, inflation and building projects. You can see when we kind of, well, the town stayed level in the two thousand and fourteen timeframe, the total town, the total, I don't know what you call it, the total tax rate went up. I believe that aligns with the school building project. One thing to note, during that time of a rise, the town stayed pretty flat, but we did erode our undesignated bond. So. On the undesignated fund, so there was an erosion of that fund between two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fifteen, and then a policy was set to try to restore it to a certain level of twelve percent. Now, remember, that's twelve percent of the.
Total tax.
It's a, yeah, it's a big tax equation for, based on the taxes.
And so over time, that balance was restored, and we have, I believe, met the policy goal in two thousand and twenty-two, and we're, we've discussed ways to make sure that we are staying at that goal and that we not continue to grow its balance, shown on the next slide. Oh, sorry. I should swap those. Go one more slide. I'll swap them. So this is the general fund and assigned balance, and it shows the how it went down from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fifteen, then went back up. And the green line, so the green line that you can see is that twelve percent target. The dotted lines of different green colors are the range of the seven to eighteen percent. And so last year, we were at that green line, and back the year before, we were at that green line too. The twenty-three number is shown based on the current budget and a projection of what the undesignated fund would do based on what it's currently doing, so that the two dots shown at two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four are kind of just an extrapolation. And I would be happy to remove them if people think it's causing confusion.
A little note that says trend.
Or as long.
Or I can just make it a dot.
Yeah. The only other thing I would suggest is that a negative number, if you're, if it's constantly going to go red.
Yep.
Just to make them pop a little, because I think it's very serious that we went other zero, very serious.
I can make the bottom shaded in red.
Oh, I really like that.
I will.
Not that we went there, but that maybe it's a reminder, don't go.
Yes, I can do that. Any questions on this chart? It's good. So this slide shows the, and I will swap the two, because it makes more sense.
And that number again, six point nine.
Okay. So it shows the. What was it again called, sorry?
Unexpended.
Yes, the unexpended funds over the last several years. And so when we had the meeting last year, we we knew that we were under a lot, but it was mainly from being understaffed. And then last year, we were a lot less unspent. And again, there's a portion of that that's from staff. And again, there's a portion of that that's from staffing and a portion not from staffing. And the breakdown is shown on the next slide. So go two slides. This is the breakdown of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty two surplus of two sixty eights. Seventy six percent is unfilled positions. And the remainder of sixty five K is for other reasons. Any questions on the budget? Last slide is the two special warrant articles, which are pretty standard. I think those are the same as prior years. And we plan to add article eight to this, which is the general fund warrant article for convenience. Say that again. We plan to add the article for the funding of the general fund to this slide, so it's complete.
Yeah, what we talked about was taking the special of the warrant articles and just putting the budget article on here as well. So there's the all three of them.
Makes sense.
We are ready for questions.
I, this is very easy to follow, I think, and it's not too, I mean, it's too much in some ways because, well, you got, we all live in it. But I think it's it's well explained and thorough enough without being so thorough that we're gonna lose the thought.
Why isn't it mentioned why you are putting that money into the capital improvement program? You don't mention why.
C I P does.
C I P, so.
I think that would be very important for the town residents to know.
That that will be a part of the presentation at town meeting. Yeah, that's the C I P presentation, not the C I P presentation.
So the big thing this year is that's going to be the only C I P warrant. There were, there will be none for bonding or for financing.
Because we're finally doing what it was.
Because we're finally going to be, we're going to be doing what we, the other big piece, though, to remember is it's going to be five hundred thousand dollars coming out of that C I P for the purchase of the property for the public safety building. The offset being the ARPA funds are going to be used to buy the ambulance, a cruiser and a six wheeler. The other thing that's in there, because it's a part of the C I P plan, even though it wasn't, it's not a C I P purchase, is we we are proposing to use seventy five thousand dollars for the unexpected fund balance for Shed Street and ten thousand for the backstop at Hughes Park. Speaking as a C I P person, I I have a, I just have a little caveat to we're scaling back the public safety building. Because we're sitting in a building that got scaled back and there's a hundred twenty five thousand dollars now that we have to spend in order to do the back of this building because the original thing that was cut off was about eighteen eighteen inches going off the back. So now water comes in the building. So I hope that these scale backs are not building scale backs that could come back to haunt the C I P five years from now.
Now, there were some wish list items, like I said. I mean, the building that Brett Los brought forward had two Sally boards on it. We added a third Sally board, we cut that back off. It's it's items like that, that just make sure that it's functional. We do want to make sure we have a big quality building.
And yeah, I just, I'm just throwing it out there. So. Own sailbacks should end up being C I P expenditures five years from now.
So on article nine for the C I P, if the C I P is going to have its own presentation, should we not include it in the budget committee slides?
Probably not.
No, because some of the C I P allocation is in this budget. So you kind of have to include it.
I will say, I will say you should because you guys will be voting whether you recommend passage of that.
So should I include one slide before the end that just gives an general overview on the why and the how of C I P? Well, you want to be, you want to be a C I P slide?
I could do it. I could do it. I will do it.
It could just be a verbal presentation.
It's just going to be a verbal presentation. Just when that article comes up.
And the mic to.
Had the mic.
So it's going to be at the time that the article comes up then, right?
Oh, yes.
So that you can explain because the people just want to know.
Yes.
Okay.
Why are we still putting money in?
It is, it's always an annual warrant article.
Yep.
Right.
And we've traditionally broken it into budget and C I P has multiples. So you get few presentations at this time.
Three articles, there'll only be this one.
So we will be discussing that time.
Yes.
Yes.
Always is.
Any other questions?
Great presentation, I think it was a great process. And both as a selectman, as a member of the budget committee, I'm firmly in support of it.
I I know how hard this is and I I know all of us have sat on the budget committee in some form or another. And we really appreciate your work and each year the process gets better.
I think, I think it's great. We've, over the last half decade, we've addressed a lot of issues in town and we're starting to sort of enter a new phase financially. But I think that's good and we did good work.
I would like to thank the town manager for bringing all the heavy lifting, supported by Alyssa. It made the job for the budget committee a lot easier.
Yeah, going somewhat on our own last year wasn't quite as much fun, was it?
Should we, as a committee, make a vote? We do that tomorrow after the public here.
I'll be here.
Okay. Any other questions from the public? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
To be close our meetings? Yeah. Okay, I believe you that. Adjourned the public. Yeah, motion to adjourn the public, the end of the party. Sorry, all the favors.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next up under business, we have the water project bid award.
Let me find it, but in your packet, you have a a whole breakdown of kind of what was submitted to us. We had six different contractors who stood into this. This bid, we were pretty happy with the turn on the project. We would like to ask the select board to to authorize or to award the contract to L M Service Contractors, Contractors of Norwich Vermont at a contract amount of one million two ninety five five hundred. And there is a motion on your paper.
Can I just ask like a pure curiosity? So this, the tabulation is that because we, what we're doing for borrowing or? That's really neat. I just never seen, I don't remember.
Well, this is a, in projects like this, the engineer runs the whole R F B R F U process. So that's where you understand that the engineer on there and everything that ran the whole process. Yeah, at a bigger project like this, it's it's much better to have it and so can get a little.
They're all the most. They're responsible for the work completed, so. So they, so they won't take a bid that's not too appropriate.
Yeah, no, this is great.
Yeah.
I, I think it's.
Like that bid significant like difference than the other bids?
You are.
There are, yeah. That's the lowest one at one million two ninety five five. And they range all the way up to one million seven seventy three nine forty five.
And you, that firm is referenced very well.
I believe so. It was recommended by our engineers who worked with all of these different people.
Other comments, questions? I could use a motion.
Make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter a contract with Ellen and Service Contractors of Norwich Vermont for a contract amount of one million two hundred ninety five thousand five hundred for the Maple Street and Moose Mountain Water, sorry, Moose Mountain Road Water Line Project. And hereby authorize the town manager or their designees to take such actions and execute all documents that may be necessary.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Next up, we have review and approval of the draft warrant.
And the first step is, I have two petition articles, that's all we've reviewed. And we need motions to accept them, a conclusion of the warrant. You have a choice.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and we accept the two petition warrant articles. For portions of land use change tax to conservation fund and one for establishment of the town forest.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Hi, sorry, I was trying to decide where I said it.
We have free eyes.
Emily, Emily's got me, right?
So since it's the petition, petition articles are put at the end of the warrant just before the two day reports because we got a petition for the land use change tax that plus moved from where it originally was, that back to the end. The select board of course can put articles wherever they want. However, if you go against precedent, then you're going to have to deal with that forevermore. That's your choice.
I'm in favor of keeping the petitioned articles at the end.
Yeah. So I know that there was interest in having you discuss one of the planning board articles relative to the historic district system here, what it is, who felt about that. You have a letter from Marjorie Carr, Town Historian, relative to that article and her support. I just, I had a read.
Yeah.
I see it.
And this is the, I mean, this is the same one we've discussed before, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want.
But it's a platform article that was going on anyway. But there was just a question as to whether or not you support them as well, and you don't have to take a position on it, but you can.
We traditionally take position on money articles, I think.
Well, it's not going to go on the warrant, it's just kind of a goer for the public. Looking to the article in humans, please. It's article six, isn't it?
Article six.
That's Flunk's own article that made them nuts.
Yeah.
You know, we have to do it, but gosh.
Okay, the historic district overlay.
I can give you a brief summary if you want.
Yeah, sort of. Yeah, that, that'd be great.
So the Heritage Commission has been investigating ways to ultimately revitalize the old townhouse and Heritage Center. So that's sort of the long term end goal. During the original facilities group, you know, we looked at it and that group basically said, beautiful building, but we don't want to put town funds into it at this time. But it's not something that we should put up as excess property, such as like Shed Street, the recommendation of that group was to sell it. The recommendation for this was to sort of find alternative paths. The Heritage Commission has been working on that. One path that they have identified for receiving and increasing our opportunities for grants is certified public government. The path to get that is to have a zoning district. And this proposal has three lots. So it would be a zoning overlay that would apply only to those three lots. The next step after this would be to have rules for those zoning districts, which would also be zoning rules that would apply to that district.
But that's just those three lots.
Just those three lots. And and it should be said that all, one is the townhouse owned by the town, the other is the union church and the other is the schoolhouse. The other two owners have written letters in favor of this. So all three owners would be in favor, assuming the town votes for it. Once you have that stuff established, we can choose to apply for certified public government, which there is, I I didn't have time to grab my notes, there's a federal agency that designates certain funds. You have to have certified public government in order to apply for those grants and they flow through a specific state program. And so there are specific grants that you can apply for if you have this certification. There are some reporting requirements associated once you do that. You have to put in an annual report. It, when you read the exact, it's like a one paragraph explanation of what it is, it's it's really quite minimal, but there is a reporting requirement for the certified public government. So sort of this is the Heritage Commission starting the process to try to get additional monies through grants to revitalize the townhouse.
Without imposing upon surrounding properties.
Exactly, right. There's no impact on surrounding properties.
I thought when they did that presentation to the planning board, they said they weren't going for certified local government anymore. It keeps going back.
Well.
I'm a little confused.
Right now, they certainly are not. This is only a zoning overlay. If they want, if they want to move forward with applying for those grants, they would have to go through the other steps. But you can't even apply for those steps unless you have a zoning district and the zoning rules apply to that district. And this would only create the zoning district.
Is there any, is there any money in that program right now?
Yeah, I might have to look it up.
They cut it back a little bit, but yeah, I mean, we'd have to have some further discussion.
Yes.
Before we move that way.
Okay. Right, I guess I get nervous because they've presented it a couple of different ways. And I think if going into town meeting, you know, certified local government is very complex compared to what they're asking of you here.
But this would also, I mean, I will say this will help with other grants that maybe don't even do that. You can just point to that we've created this breakdown. And I mean, that's always worth some points on a grant application.
And there's no requirement to go to the following steps once you do this. But this would be the first step. And the end goal is to revitalize the townhouse into a functional building that can become an asset for the town again without asking for direct budget money of the town.
The discussion at planning board on the rules component was that you don't have to make any rules. And there were some discussions on whether or not it was good to make some rules anyways. That got kind of long. Dan's nodding his head for a reason. So that got set aside, but I would just say that that the rules piece is is not clear, but right now no one's being asked for any rules. That would be subject to further discussion and, well, rulemaking. At a public meeting.
Okay. We're all comfortable with this?
I mean, it's, I think it's fine, people are going to decide based on their own feelings.
Okay.
Okay, now you also have to, we're getting down to the last two pages of the fold for it. Articles eight through fifteen. To determine if you want to keep all these articles on here. Now, the elderly exemption, I think that we're recommending that's a whole. That is article eleven. At this point, we're recommending we hold off so that we can do some better research, determine, rather than just saying, what do other towns do and do that? Because other towns might be doing the same thing and saying, what is everybody else doing?
I can, I can speak to that a little bit. We actually did a pretty big in depth and pulled some assessors from across the state in and asked people, you know, what formulas do you think, what metrics are you using to decide what the right exemption is? And pretty much the answer that we got back was, I don't know, we just picked a number. So jumping around and saying, we want to be the same as this town or that town, really didn't make sense. So I worked really hard with the Claremont assessors and we came up with a formula based on your median income. Your median income and snap rates and things from the state, and you plugged some numbers in, and then it kicked out a number at the end. And so, I didn't have the time to go chase that equation back down and put the work into it. So, I talked to Julie, and we are recommending that we remove that from this year's warrant to replace on next year's warrant to make the change.
Makes sense.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and it, because we could be wrong in either direction, we can do a disservice one way or another, we don't get it right.
The other thing I like about the, I guess, having that formula and a really good matrix of that is. Every time you make this rule, you're drawing a line, and someone's going to just barely not qualify, and why did we not qualify? If all we can say is it's a number we made up, that it's kind of hard, but if you can point to some really good specific data of why. Wrong right here, then it makes it a little easier to have that discussion.
So, of course, you're free to remove the other articles that you put on voluntarily, though I don't see any others that we would recommend you remove at this point.
Yeah, and we can go through and talk through them.
But if you want to start with.
Veterans ones, there's an RSA from the legislature last year that said we had to reaffirm those.
Yes, we have to do that. I'm sorry, I skipped five to nine.
Well, there's the solar tax exemption. And really what that is is.
That's not taxing ourselves.
I mean, it came up, yeah, with the silver mill or solar tier, that there was a change again in the legislature. That when this was voted in, it was for solar panels on a home. Since then, we've came up with these net metering models and batteries and stores. And it says right in the RSA, if you want to add those in, it needs to be reaffirmed, because that's not what the voters voted on when they first voted, so.
Article fifteen is strictly housekeeping, it's something the board subsequently supported, the trustee of trust wins are doing. So, the things you need to take action on, if those are all staying, is Articles eight through ten. You would have to vote to, this is a vote to recommend or not recommend adoption of the articles at town meeting.
You're saying, yes, I would support this, or no, you would not support this.
Because we already, we already know it has to go on.
It's already on the warrant, so now you're voting to recommend the article, adoption of the article to the people.
It seems like there's always confusion, whether you're voting to put it on or you're voting to support it, that's a, the support or not support.
Thank you for being very clear. I will make a motion to recommend Article eight, which for the benefit of the public is the budget committee recommended some of. Eight million one hundred ninety-four thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars.
And that is the total budget, including water, sewer, caper projects, and the tip fund, which are self-funded. So, there's an offsetting revenue.
It's not on your sheet.
All in favor? Aye.
I would make a motion to recommend Article.
Did you say aye there?
Aye, aye, yeah, I have a little bit of a mumble. I wrote myself, I was like, aye, scribbled. Mumble junior. I'll make a motion to recommend Article nine, which for the benefit of the public is the CIP allocation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion to recommend Article ten, which is the employee and retiree benefits expendable allocation.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Make a note after the fact that we did bring that down from our normal allocation based on what we did. And we're going to be looking over this next year of doing something similar that we did to the undesignated fund balance. Where we, we look at our liability and our retirement, and we come up with a percentage that we try to keep.
Yeah. The other thing is, there is a meeting in the select board posted for tomorrow, which is the norm, so if you want to come to the budget hearing. You will have an opportunity to change the warrant at that point, you don't have to. If you don't have a quorum of the select board, nothing happens.
I'm planning for it at the same time, I, just for the future, maybe that wasn't there. I, I could have, I just didn't. I don't know if you know what the feed looks like on the iPhone, but it looks like this, and I was like, what happened and why is this all together? And then I realized it really does overlap. So, it starts, planning board starts at six thirty tomorrow. I guess I'm going to make some decisions. I don't know who I want to hang out with.
Where is tomorrow's meeting?
Here.
Here.
And, and planning board, because it's a community building, and I can't turn it from online, so.
You can join this one up there.
Oh, but no.
So, are we done then with the?
Done with the wars.
Okay.
So, town report discussion, that is new.
Oh, can I just say thank you for this table? I'm sorry, this, the table with the credits, I know I often ask you questions like this. This is a very nice table, and I just wanted to acknowledge that it has, for the benefit of everybody out there, it's the veterans' pack credit, like. How many that were taken and the ups and downs, so I thought that was very helpful to kind of give you an overall mental picture of how much money you're offering to every base. People, plus not tax money.
So, we never did have a determination of who we wanted to dedicate the.
Dedicate the what?
Annual report.
Ah, yes. Did we have a list of potential candidates?
No, well, we don't, we have one.
I suggested Lasalat, I think. Oh, Donville, and, but I think I suggested Lasalat out loud.
I think that was the, oh, you did say. Of the picture as well.
Oh, yeah, picture as well, but I just didn't know, I, given that they may or may not, you don't know. It was just an idea, because they did, they did a lot with the Ukraine fundraiser too, and Roger Donville's my other, because he just finished up a term of service for. Those are two ideas. I don't know if you guys had an idea like that.
If you're okay with that, then we can go that way, and anybody who has content, they can.
We have two suggestions, right, we have to choose one of them.
Well, I, I mean, that's just more like a brainstorm, so, yeah, I mean, if you have feelings one way or another, I won't be hurt.
I think Lasalat has done a great deal to the community. I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, no, I mean, they both served it fairly well, and. Lasalat will get lost then, so. Be good to recognize that.
Adam's going to write it, that's the question, right?
Select one report that we need really soon.
He's a really good writer.
So, we do, yes, we need the select board's report for the town report. It does not have to be, I can, if I have it by Monday.
What?
So, listen, I have to write tons of bascoms still.
And you're an English teacher.
Monday of which month that we talk?
Five business days.
Monday.
Don't worry, I haven't done mine either, I just begged for extra time.
I know how you feel, only ten times that, so.
At least it gets emails like from me that are like, I just threw my report in, I'm really sorry.
So, fellow selectmen, send me an email or two with some ideas, okay? I'd be happy to write it, but.
Awesome.
You're the English teacher, I'm the engineer.
So, yours should be like all data-driven and really.
Right.
Yeah.
Summarize those slides.
Don't you have an intern or something?
That's, that's, it's really a lot of this.
I know.
Sure.
I can help you a little bit. I kind of want to pull in some other data from around the town, important things too, so.
Okay. Because I know what we're doing the next couple of days.
That's very achieving.
Next year, I'll write a budget report.
Wait, is it the newbie writes the report?
There you go.
Have the bot write it. GPT report, right?
It writes really good formulas for myself, I'm just saying.
Write some pretty good essays too. Yeah.
Going to be interesting. I'm going to try it out for my FOM one.
Do we want to do the picture for the cover?
I think if you have a good Lasalat one, somebody must have given you one for the.
The Ukrainian days would be good.
Yeah, yeah.
There's got to be a new one to the new set of aerial photographs.
And I was going to say, there was a local graduate who took some drone video of it too, separate from that.
Oh, really?
There was a pretty neat drone video, and he was shot, so, if you don't come up with something, I can ask. I can ask.
I think I've seen some really good photos of the Ukrainian bands, there's some stuff like that.
They'll be something different because the lights would, you know, that.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Good point.
And that was a really big collaborative project.
And president of town as well.
Okay, other business to come before the Board of Selectmen, public comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
What is the long-term goal with the building an infield center? End use.
I don't necessarily think there's a truly articulated role of how it would be used, because there's so much. That needs to be done before it can be used in any functional way.
Okay.
From, like, it doesn't have bathrooms, doesn't have parking. It, they have, over the last couple of years, solidified the structure itself, so it's no longer falling apart. But I don't think there's a clear vision for exactly how it would be used at this point.
And so, it's essentially historical value that we don't want to tear down.
Exactly.
Yeah, they secure the envelope, it won't fall through the floor right now.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, right, which, and that's like when the, when the facilities committee was meeting, that was kind of the conclusion of that group. Was this is, you know, a historical building, town owns it, it's part of our history. It's worthwhile, but if we're going to invest money in facilities, that's not the facility that group was interested in investing money in. Is, I think, a fair statement.
I think we need to do some overall goal setting across the town, like the really high-level goal setting that would drive some of our decision-making. And make it easier when we have these conversations to say, what's the priority, how do we handle it? How much town resource in terms of office time do we dedicate to it, right? Because even when you do things for free, there can be a significant amount of backend work, so. All of those conversations are going to have to be on deck.
Thanks.
I think we have to do administrative items then.
I have one thing, though, and we may want to add this a little clearer tomorrow. But just wanted to solidify for the select board that the budget committee did decide to use a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of fund balance. It's put into the revenue section of the budget.
Did recommend.
Recommended, yeah.
Because I don't think we get to decide, right?
You got to decide, but, and they put that in there to offset the cost of redoing all the cemetery signs was one project. One was to do the strategic plan that we talked about with the budget committee and select board for long-term planning. Twenty-five thousand was for the master plan, the next five chapters. Like they stated, to do a compensation study was one of them, the Hughes Park Backstop was another one. And then we budgeted based on our consultant that's been doing the work there, seventy-five thousand dollars for Shed Street. To finish up the testing and to remove those buildings and get that ready for sale, so. They had all those little projects that were intermingled in.
As well as the town website upgrade.
I just totally spaced until, did we get the invasive species built in, because it was supposed to be a multi-year project?
Yes, we budgeted.
Sorry, I totally, I didn't go digging in that deep.
So, for the preparation of the, the state MS seven thirty-seven budget form. They do need to know that you recommend the same use of revenue. Because I have to put things in a recommended or not recommended column.
I'll make a motion that we use, it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand, I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Hundred and sixty-two five, hundred and sixty-two thousand five fundraisers.
No, it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
It's in the article, it's in the article about a sixty-five thousand.
I'm sorry, but one sixty-five.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we recommend taking a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the anticipated undesignated fund balance. Projects as outlined.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, this is, this is right in line with what we've been talking about for five years, and fully designated fund balance.
Get it where it's supposed to be, drive it down the middle.
For one-time projects.
Yeah, there's a probably, I guess, greatly below twelve percent, it's eleven something.
This is, this is exactly what we've been talking about for five, six years of, once you get your, once you hit your target, you can use it for one-time projects.
And now, and now's the time to do these things, to use our savings and to use our, our much better planning to our advantage and not to be borrowing.
So, we can add a slide on that.
We could, but I think it really needs to be shown that that money was put in the budget revenue line to offset these projects. It's not a separate warrant on the people or something like that, it's built into the budget.
And it is, it is written right in Article eight. It's written right in, so it's front and center.
You can just.
I'll just fix this tomorrow morning or tonight, and then send you the updated.
Do we need to do anything with these administrative items?
I think we need to sign some.
Abatance, right, so.
But no vote.
Not if you agree with them.
I, I'm wondering, I just had a concern about the fact that somebody got a check that says town of Enfield and cashed it. Like. Right, because they're claiming that there was a fraud, the check says town of Enfield clearly on the scan, and there's a.
Then you're writing it to the town of Enfield.
Yes, I understand that, but he's, so he said, upon inquiries, he discovered that his check had been stolen, altered, and cashed.
Yes.
So, somebody took one that was written to us and cashed it, which is really kind of alarming. I'm just.
We, we did not receive that.
Oh, I know we didn't, I'm just wondering how they, I mean, come on now, you can't just go cashing checks for towns, who knows?
I don't know how they got it, I have no idea. The issue on that one is, he had, he's been trying to pay things. And, you know, he had to open a bank account and the whole bit.
Yeah.
Which is why we're asking that the interest be abated.
Okay. Oh, oh, okay, it's some, it's unrelated, it wasn't our payment that got stolen.
No, I know about it.
His money got stolen and we didn't receive it.
Oh, he did, because I read it as he sent a check to Enfield in December, and I'm like, this one says January, I didn't follow, got it. Did not follow the story, it was being told.
Well, he may have sent it, but it never got to us because somebody stole it. I don't know how or where or why, but in the whole process of things, he's been trying to pay his bill. And that's why you're asking to be.
Same reasonable, we would want someone to do it for us.
Yes.
It's not, it's not very much money. Favorite friend died in Malibu.
While you're doing that, you had talked fate about doing a non-public for my evaluation.
Oh, right, and I did find the form, and then I didn't forward it to you guys.
I will probably not be at the next meeting, do you guys want to, want me to schedule a non-public so you guys can talk about it? And then the next one?
Yeah, that makes sense, because I think if, and, and so for Eric's benefit, we've had a form we can use, we've used in the past. We could circulate it, decide if you guys like it. Yeah, that makes sense because I think if, and, and so for Eric's benefit, we've had a form we can use, we've used in the past, we could circulate it, decide if you guys like it still, if you want to update it. And then if, um, maybe work with Elisa on that, if you all agree you want to use it or make a modification to it. Turn in our copy, the way, the way it worked last time was everyone filled it out and so the town manager at the time also filled it out and then we all sat down and discussed it. And I don't know.
Want me to warn one next meeting so the three of you can chat? We can do that and then I'll be back for the first meeting in March and we can.
Our next meeting is also on Tuesday, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good, cause I'm out of town on Monday, but I'm back.
You don't allow you to go.
Yeah, so it works because I will physically be here.
Yeah, um, before I forget again for the fiftieth time, I dug it out of my old laptop, which died. I can. Yeah, well, I mean, if you like, if you all like it, I'm just saying, so use last one. First I found the page that I couldn't mark, the B C digging.
We can do that, we can.
I wonder if we could do that as a jumping off, like for ideas and then do it at fifty-five planning.
No, I might be a little more focused towards this, this is what we're gonna work on versus this is what we're gonna work on.
Sorry, Doc. He was done.
Awesome, that's goodbye.
Motion to adjourn?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all for your hard work.